Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 PM on December 19th and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'd like to invite Senior Pastor John Dees to the podium for our invocation.
Let's just be still before the Lord for just a moment and just tell Him that you love Him in your heart. And Lord, we want to come before you tonight. We thank you for this season of the year, which for Christians, we believe in the Lordship of Jesus Christ and thank you, Lord, for sending Jesus Christ to this world to be the Savior of all of us if we so trust in Him. Lord, it's not easy to be leaders. It's not easy to be folks that have to take a leadership position. So I pray for this council tonight. I thank you for every one of them. I pray that you would guide them in their thoughts and in their discussions and then their, and eventually their decisions. Lord, I pray that they would be just leaders that look to you and trust in you and for the ultimate gift of decision-making. Lord, thank you for Madison, Alabama. What a privilege it is to live in this nice place. We are blessed beyond measure and we thank you for it. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor.
Thank you. Please show me the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlet.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Yes.
Councilmember Seaford.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam President. This is Brian. What we have here, we had two numbers that were incorrect on the agenda. If you go to under District Number Three, we had Resolution 2022-340R. The amount should actually read 3,0070685. This was a late addition at the end of the week after we published, when we got the correct number for the invoice. And finally, if we go to Legal under Section Four, Resolution Number 2022-329R, this is a typo that we should have corrected. I apologize. But it should be 2,440468. But those are the only two corrections that I have.
Okay, correcting those typos, we will accept the agendas printed with the corrections. Next, we're going to go to Approval of the Minutes. Minutes Number 2022-23-RG. Do you have a motion and second?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, roll call please, sorry. I wanted to do that one quickly, sorry.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Ah.
Councilmember Seaford.
Okay, motion passes. We do not have any presentations and awards, so we will move to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes for every speaker, so we can be consistent. As a reminder, please go to the podium and speak directly into the microphone, so people at home can hear, and closed captions will work. First, state your name and your council district or neighborhood. You no longer need to state your home address. Address your remarks to me as the City Council President. The council will not enter into dialogue at this time. This section of the agenda is for you, the public, to inform us, the City Council, about your views. If you have questions, we will ask staff to address them at an appropriate time after the meeting. We've had some cards turned in, so we will begin with those who have reserved time with cards. I'd first like to ask Dr. Joseph Pettis to approach.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Joseph A. Pettis and I live 234 Avian Lane. I'm a urologic oncologist. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the council tonight on the topic of medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of Madison. In 2021, Alabama joined the majority of the union by legalizing medical marijuana. And while I'm sure that there was- And while I'm sure that there was a vigorous debate at that time about the definite pros and cons of medical marijuana, the state ultimately decided that the pros outweighed the cons and voted to allow dispensaries for very specific types of medical marijuana to be sold. The legislation clearly identifies the reasons for prescribing cannabis-based medicine. The method of delivery of the drug has to be a pill, topical, suppository, or a nebulizer. These products are intended to treat cancer, intractable pain, seizures, other debilitating life-altering illnesses. Treating these kinds of patients, to me, seems like a laudable thing. And so the question is, why not support medical marijuana dispensaries in, in Madison? The law is narrow in its definition of who can use them and it specifically says that you can't use the fun types, the vapable, edible, smokable, the recreational types of these products. There have been various arguments proffered about why we shouldn't do it. It's a risky, uh, thing. We'll have unsavor- unsavory people come to our community, more intoxicated people on our streets, slippery slope medical marijuana to recreational marijuana. That people will take these drugs and move on to stronger drugs. These, these are silly arguments. They don't stand up to reality. It is currently impossible to drive two consecutive miles in Madison without, uh, passing at least one establishing, establishment selling Delta eight or Delta nine THC products, which is the very same mind-altering chemical that is marijuana. These products are dry from the hemp plant and they are absolutely intended for no other reason than for recreational use. They are sold in gas stations. They are sold in convenience stores. They are sold in plain view of miners, right here, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, in Madison, Alabama, and is a hundred percent legal. In my, in my opinion, marijuana is not a wonder drug for my patients. It does have a role, though, and it's really unfortunate. It has been politicized like it has for decades. It's not the boogeyman. And when you take into consideration that perfectly legal THC is available in our community, uh, without a prescription, uh, really, there is-
Your time is up.
There is no argument against it and-
Thank you.
Hope y'all pull out. Thank you.
Next, I have a comment card from Robert Peters.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robert A. Peters and District six. And just a little over there. Want to talk to you about, uh, what the Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration Drug Fact Sheet says about marijuana and the need for it is not there. It says marijuana is a Schedule I substance under the Controlled Substances Act, meaning it has a high potential for abuse, no currently accepted medical use in treatment in the United States, and a lack of accepted safety for use under medical supervision. So I am against having disp- special dispensaries for so-called medical marijuana, which is an oxymoron, in the city of Madison. The, uh, this fact sheet says, goes on to say that the U.S. Food and Drug Administration has the federal authority to approve drugs for medicinal use in the United States. But Alabama, uh, is going against that. The FDA has not approved a marketing application for any marijuana product for any clinical indication. That includes, uh, heavy pain and a number of other things. The, uh, Alabama Board of Medical Examiners Rulebook claims sixteen things that medical marijuana could possibly treat, including depression and intractable pain, and yet the FDA says it doesn't work for that. Uh, consistent therewith, the FDA and DEA, that's the Drug Enforcement Administration of the United States, have concluded that marijuana has no federally approved medical use for treatment in the U.S. and thus it remains as a Schedule I controlled substance under federal law. Now, there are, um, drugs that are controlled that use the drug found in marijuana called THC. A number of them are Marinol Syndros and Epidolix, if I said that correctly. But these are all, uh, pharmacy drugs. They are controlled. They have measured amounts of THC in them, whereas of the medical marijuana, you don't know what you're getting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Next, I have Jacqueline Peters.
Uh, Jacqueline Peters, six oh three Marion Drive. Well, I didn't have to say that, so Madison, Alabama. I'm using my time. Okay, um, interesting. I wasn't going to talk about this, but I've had cancer twice, the worst kind you can have, at forty-two and then last year. I've had the worst chemo you could ever have. We have wonderful drugs. I did not throw up one time. You get dizzy from marijuana. You throw up. You can get sick. That's not true, what he says. I am a cancer survivor. I had triple negative breast cancer. It's usually a killer, okay? I did not need it. Do not believe that man, okay? I am the best person to say this. Um, and I'm also here to say this. The city's need for money, and listen, does not make marijuana safe for our children or anyone else. The need for money for our city, and we have a great debt, does not make it right to harm our children and quality of life in Madison. So consider whether or not your decision is, is based on money, okay? And yes, I drive my husband crazy sometimes because I'm so honest. Oh, right. But he likes it, actually. I told you before, Dr. Mark Johnson, Director of the Colorado Medical Association, has warned of psychosis and serious cognitive effects on the brains of our adolescents up to the age of twenty-five. This marijuana can be given to our children eighteen and under by their parents. Do you understand that? And it is going to affect their brains and harm it. And then nineteen and over up to twenty-five can be greatly affected, and you know it really harms adults. And so I'm here to ask the city council to vote against medical marijuana. Make a statement to our children, to our community, that it would be morally wrong to, to support this harmful drug, even if we thought we could make some money off of it to pay the city's bills, because it does not work. It's a fraud, okay? Now, I appeal to your sense of right and wrong and for you to be a good example to our young people when they ask why Madison does not have medical marijuana, but everybody else does. When they ask, we want to give them a life lesson. We want to tell them, our city council did not follow the crowd of lies and deception to make money regarding the sale of safety of marijuana. We took the high road, the right road, and we voted against it. Let's do what is moral, morally right. Let's follow the science that my husband gave you, and I did. Let's follow medical research. Let's follow common sense. Let's find other ways to, to fund our city's bills and let's keep a clear conscience and let's keep our children safe. A city's need for money-
Peters, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Does not make medical marijuana safe.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Would anyone else like to come forward and address the council during public comments? Please state your name and your district.
Well, I'm Mike Ball. Uh, I live off Zert Road, Teddy's District. I have been the state representative for this, representing Madison for twenty years. It has been a great honor. Spent twenty-five years in law enforcement before that. I, I just moved here a year before I got elected. I never would have dreamed that I would have been the state representative here. And I will tell you, the way I wound up in law enforcement, the way I wound up in politics, was just trying to do the next right thing and just trying to find the path. I was an investigator long before I was a politician. Being a politician, being politics is about doing what looks right. But being investigator is about finding the truth. It's about like figuring out what is right. And, and I never would have dreamed. I was, I was probably one of the most adamant people against the medical cannabis issue for many years. I killed the bills. And then in two thousand fourteen, I got an email from a, from a grandmother, a desperate grandmother, about her granddaughter who had seizures. And, and as I was trying to formulate a reason why we couldn't do that, I, I started checking into the CBD oil. And we wound up passing Carley's Law. We put a million dollars a year in state funding to UAB to study the effects of cannabis. And you know what? Turns out, there are many medical purposes. I, I, I had to write a book about it and leave politics. Not just about that, but about the corruption issue as well. There's so many things I need to talk. Because there's so much disinformation and pe- things are over-politicized and we lose common sense and reason. And we've done that on cannabis, because, because people do abuse it. But God created it for a reason and the reason is because it does have some healing qualities and science everywhere is starting to reveal it. As a matter of fact, it has been revealed. But what happened is there was a propaganda, a propaganda, uh, mission that started, uh, many years ago and it started getting worse and worse. But at any rate, what we've done is we've methodically gone through and, and, and this was a series of steps that was thought through. This bill that we have before us is carefully regulated. It is not a backdoor way to get to recreational. I do not support recreational. But I, I believe that we have a moral obligation if there are people who are suffering and we have a way to help them to do it. That's why I served twenty-five years in law enforcement and that's why I went into politics and quite frankly, that's why I got out. And so, uh, so if, if, if anybody wants to hear more, I have written a book. It's gonna be out. Uh, you know, I, I doubt it'll make any money. I don't care. But, but I believe the truth is very, very important and it don't always come from the government.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much and I appreciate, uh, pray, pray y'all will just follow your hearts.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to address the council?
Margie Daly, Carrance District. Rams. Private access road from the stadium club where? Who will use? Low occupancy of Town Madison. No public per- purpose proven by Aldat. No open public hearings, yet two legal notices. Flies over Madison. Stadium proposed to bring business to Route twenty. Co-mingling of who's who of Huntsville, Madison, and the politically connected. Expressway for the stadium club, VIP members only. Private suites, clubs, Madison City taxpayers unwillingly sponsor at a hundred percent. Private flyovers for select donors and local officials. Fund raises where tax dollars funnel back and forth, where nonprofits, federal, state, city taxes merge to benefit the elites. Show Walters, Cecilia and Jeff. Jeff at MVP in Madison Forward. Community of Greater Huntsville, MVP, city donations. Huntsville, sixty-five to eighty percent funded by Aldat. Madison City taxpayers fund one hundred percent. Building private bridges for elites. Isolated road for the politically chosen donors, sponsors, and benefactors. Expressway from Huntsville to Madison. Celebrate, fundraise, party, private ramps. Who patrols? Madison City, one hundred percent on the hook. Our Zoom resolution has zero restrictions or contagion reference. Building private roadways for private clubs isn't acceptable, isn't an acceptable use of tax dollars and donations. Do we have consultants or auditors? Resolution twenty twenty-two, three three two states, public examiners of accounts. Who is this? Who paid for the hard text and the survey? State law seventeen five twelve says, public has the right to know and required by law to be on these texts, who paid for them. The survey was screwed, skewed on the question number nine. You had to answer it. Our unlit, unsafe roads need reflective striping, at least as you bleed us dry in perpetuity. A few shekels on paint and lights, please. Agenda packets unavailable. Why can't the city print up for the public? Can't see the details on the nets or the screen. It eliminates public information. We're heading towards a dict- dictatorship with the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Anyone else like to address the council?
Jennifer Coe, Ashley Estate, District five. I just want to pick up where I left off last time, um, on the Town Madison District. If you are paying off the Town Madison bonds as per Proposed Ordinance twenty twenty-two, three thirty-four for the construction of the ramps, why haven't you dissolved the district yet? Please furnish the public with a date for the proj- the projected dissolution of the cooperative district. The Town Madison interchanges are superfluous and an unnecessary expense that taxpayers are on the hook for, the principal and the interest on the bonds. Apparently Aldat did a traffic study and deemed them unnecessary as they are already sufficient roads for ingress and egress into and out of Town Madison. Why are taxpayers funding these controlled access ramps to go one mile from exit nine? And whose interest is this in? It's in the interest of the owner of the Trash Pandas, the head of Madison Forward, uh, who wants to change the government to the council manager instead of mayor council, is Jeff Showalter. It's probably in the interest of the developer of Town Madison, uh, district since he didn't build them in the first place. There is, um, there was an Aldat article in twenty fifteen promoting this interchange as a big win for Town Madison Shopping Complex. County officials and Madison officials are quoted as saying they hope the new exit lures next level stores and developers said they were negotiating with ten big box stores. The reality is, is that these ramps are only going to be used for the Trash Panda Games and whatever events y'all built those luxury suites for at Toyota Field. There are only some apartments and a few houses besides the Toyota Field. Was it not enough that we had to subsidize the Trash Pandas? I guess I would have rather had Neiman Marcus or Bloomingdale's, but I wasn't complaining. Not until this became a, now coming upon a decade of subsidies. Let's talk about the subsidies, uh, subsidizing a fast-growing city. Why did, in twenty, the twenty fifteen Aldat com article mention an I five sixty-five access to an extended Hughes Road? What happened to that plan? This was supposed to be for retail. They mentioned the ongoing competition with Huntsville for retail, which would fund local government. Instead, it's the opposite. We're funding the Trash Pandas and the stadium club for people that want to change the government. And then, uh, maybe y'all can tell us, why do we need to change the government? We have a government that would function just fine if everybody would do their job. I don't really understand why they started, um, Madison Forward. Was it started by ex-public official?
Your time is up. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hi, I'm Pat Freel, District one. I've lived here for about twenty years and one of the things that has impressed me about the legislature of Alabama, they don't do a whole lot, in my opinion. They are not good at doing new things. Oh, we're one of only, what, two or three states that don't have a lottery. But then what happens a year or so ago? They pass medical marijuana dispensaries. Why? I hope they passed it because they realize this is a good thing. I am getting less young day by day. I have had medical problems in the past where I have seen people with similar problems in the states that authorize marijuana- where I have seen people with similar problems in the states that authorize marijuana have taken marijuana, and it's done a lot to relieve some of the misery that comes out of the drugs that we use to make people better. If there is even a small chance that medical marijuana will allow a person with rheumatoid arthritis to get off of infusions, which lowers her, uh, resistance to disease, I think it's worth the chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freel. Anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments, and we're gonna move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
The, uh, finance committee met today and discussed, uh, meetings, uh, as we go out through the year, and we talked about the, um, periodic bills to be paid and found everything to be in order. With that, I'd like to move to approve.
Second. Motion second. Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
And presentation and reports, Mayor Finley.
All right, well, I'm gonna start by asking council for approval of Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash three thirty-nine R, authorizing the purchase of the audiovisual equipment from Sutherland Sight and Sound for the court council chamber equipment upgrades at the cost of forty-four thousand six hundred and ten dollars.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion in a couple of seconds. Um, any discussion?
I've got, I do some. First and foremost, where's it coming from? So as this is both for the courts and for the council, each of them will, their money is currently in the budget, and then whatever isn't in there, Roger can add at mid-year, um, as it will take about five to six months to get this, all this equipment in. What is the equipment? So let me give you guys an understanding. First and foremost, with the camera that's up here, we'll change that to a full HD camera. It gives the gentleman from IT better controls to move the camera as needed, so when we have things going on here, the camera can follow and move. Uh, it's also a ten eighty, uh, HD feed, uh, for the internet for streaming, recording, archiving, and any necessary meetings or as, uh, the, for us or for the judge. Um, that, we'll get new projectors. Uh, that's gonna give more clarity. Right now, um, they're just not, um, set up, especially for the lighting in here, so that'll give more clarity when viewing maps, plans, and images up on the screens. It's eight times brighter, uh, with HD colors. Uh, it'll also give the correct format on the screens. At times, we have the screens, um, that don't show the correct format. Uh, it works with Macs, Windows, iPads, Androids, and virtually any smartphone. And it will allow us to connect wireless, wirelessly without the need for any particular cables, which makes it easier, but also, you know, we don't have to have the USB drives that come in as could be a possible security risk. So all of those things, uh, I give our, thank to our IT team who has worked, uh, with the folks to come up with this game plan, um, and I ask for your approval.
Any questions or discussion?
I had one question. Um, somebody wrote in and asked whether there'll be a camera that will show the faces of the people that come to the podium and speak to us.
Uh, that's not in, in it for right now. Um, right now, it's really just set up for them to see the overall piece here, and for the judge to be able to see the things he needs to see.
Okay. Is that something that possibly could be added at some point? Just?
Uh,
seen, or?
We can ask for an add-on, um, if that's something that council would want. I'm not sure that, you know, I guess it goes back to if council deems that that's necessary. But that would, that's not in this quote right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm just glad we got a camera that'll make Greg Shaw look better.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
Yes, we are.
Yep.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes.
All right, and other than wishing everybody Merry Christmas, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. District number one.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, I attended, along with several other council members, Christmas capers on Saturday. Uh, got a chance to talk with Debbie Overcash, uh, yesterday. We believe there were about three hundred to three hundred and fifty people there. It's the most ever that we've had. We had to take COVID off, but, uh, had a great turnout, great event, lots of fun, lots of prizes thrown, and lots of people to support that event. Many thanks to MPD to be there, uh, to just, um, have a presence for safety, and many thanks to the Rotary Club and the Historic Preservation Committee for all of the work they did, and to our downtown merchants who donated thousands of dollars' worth of prizes. Very appreciative of that. And I just wanted to also take this opportunity, um, she's not here tonight, but our Director of Human Resources is retiring at the end of the year, uh, Mrs. Terry Towery. She has been with the city for over twenty years, and I, I wish she was here. Um, I believe she might be out of town, um, heading out for, uh, Christmas. But I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of our HR committee to thank her for her many, many, many years of service. HR is just, um, you know, there's just a lot of detail, a lot of laws, a lot of regulations, a lot of paperwork. Um, and she has been tenacious in supporting our city, and I just wanted to take this moment to recognize her and thank her for, um, her service to our community, and that's all I have.
Thank you. District number two.
Yes, um, this week on County Line Road, we had a ribbon cutting for John Smith Subs. Y'all, I didn't have one, but it's on our list of places to go. It looked delicious. It smelled wonderful. They have fries with their subs, which is something you can't get at every sub place, so go frequent John Smith Subs. Also, um, Mara was there and-
And bought a sub, and it was good.
Defer to her opinion on that one. So, um, also earlier in the finance committee, if any of y'all have ideas or specific things you think that, um, especially you department heads, things that we need to discuss in finance, please let us know so we can get those on the agendas. Um, Christmas capers was wonderful. Tons of volunteers. Karen, y'all did a fabulous job. Always wonderful. Debbie Overcash always goes above and beyond. And Santa Claus, that we paid with, um, council special projects money, there was lines for pictures with Santa in the ornament. So it was just a great evening. If you haven't ever been, go ahead and put it on your calendar for next year. And, um, happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. District number three.
Um, first of all, take care of the business. We have Resolution, uh, twenty, twenty-two, three, forty R, um, that was corrected for three thousand seven hundred six dollars and eighty-five cents. That is to go towards banners and schnitzels for the, the, uh, walkways and stuff in the, uh, the Town Madison District for the, uh, new entertainment district. Um, so it's coming out of special projects and make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion in second. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes. Anything else, Teddy?
Um, just real quick, uh, same thing, and we, we went to Christmas capers. It was, it was kinda nice. I tried to, tried to hide out, but Renee pulled me up front and got me out, out there in front of everybody, so I appreciate that. Not really. But, uh, also, you know, if you've driven downtown, you'll notice that there are cards at Christmas, at Christmas Lane Cards, and, uh, Tina and Gerald normally do that. Uh, Tina was sick this, sick this year. Um, still Gerald came out and helped out. She did as well, as, as it got, you know, she got to feeling better. Uh, Dr. Tom Vaughn and Laura Vaughn, which, which live on Church Street, they put those out, um, and you know, it, it's, it brightens up our neighborhood and it's great for our neighborhood, but it's really just great for the city because you get to go down to, you know, to do different events, and, uh, all the, uh, Christmas trees that are downtown. Lot of people involved in that, so, you know, take some time out, you know, just take an evening, a cool evening in a jacket and, you know, go see those things, so that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. District number four.
No, no new business.
Okay, District Six.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, piggyback on what Mara said. The Christmas capers was a blast. The crowd was wonderful. To see people sitting there yelling, chicken, chicken, throw me a chicken. The dolls, children, it was just a wonderful experience. Um, Debbie Overcash, she handled it all. She always does a wonderful job in all that she is involved with, with the city. And it was just one more thing that makes this city so special, especially during the holidays. Um, I'll have more to say later, but I just wanna thank everyone for, for just being such good neighbors to each other. I always hear stories about people that are helping each other, and we don't always hear those in this, you know? It's not always commented on. But there's so much good that goes on to this city, and I just wanna thank those that have a big heart. And I just wanna wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, and a very safe and Happy New Year, and, and I hope you spend time with your families. And if you don't have family, find friends, and just enjoy the holidays, and, uh, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you all. I wish you all a Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. I'm gonna close with just an encouragement to shop local. If you want it under the tree, I suggest you shop local. Okay, now, we don't have any board or committee report, um, appointments, and we're gonna move to department reports. Engineering, you're up first.
All right. Uh, so the first one I have is, uh, Resolution Number twenty twenty-two, three, thirty-five R. This is authorizing an amendment to the agreement with OHM Advisors, uh, in the amount of fifty-five hundred dollars. Extending survey along Seager's Road to length and travel lane capers to recommended length for project number, uh, twenty-two dash oh thirty-nine. Um, that's the intersection improvements for Mesa and Seager's Road, and that'll be paid out of the engineering, uh, department budget. Um, they started on the design. It turns out that we need a little extra survey information, so that's what they're gonna go out and do.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second. Have any discussion, questions? Okay, we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
And motion passes. Next.
All right. And I also have Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash three thirty-six R. This is authorization of professional services agreement with CDG Inc. for traffic signal design at the intersection of County Line Road and a future Royal, future Royal Drive extension. Uh, that design, uh, contract amount is fifty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, that'll also be paid from engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion or questions?
Do we just have a ballpark time on, on when that was gonna happen? Um, I, I didn't realize it was gonna, I knew we were extending Winchester. I didn't realize we were extending Royal Drive to-
I, I don't have that. Um, that's ki- kind of, uh, planning is driving the bus on that. We're just, engineers just trying to get ready. Go ahead and get the, the, uh, intersection designed, so that when the road gets put in, I think it's gonna be, well, I don't know the, all the details.
I think, I think the best answer is, it'll come with an if then. You know, what this allows, with Royal coming through there, that goes through the property right now from an economic development standpoint-
Oh, yeah.
-that we're looking to fill up. So, I, you know, it, getting ahead of the game, so once somebody says, hey, we'll do this if you guys can help us here, this gets us ahead of the game there.
So if I were to-
There's no real date. You could, you could try to get me for a year or two years.
No, 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 I won't do that. But if I were to look at Google Maps and I just followed Royal Drive to County Line Road, that's where it would be?
It's gonna skew down to the south a little bit and then come across. Uh, there's some, if, if you look at the tax map, you can kinda see it's gonna line up with some property lines that, kind of, the northern lines of property. We don't get ahead of this design, go ahead and get it done, so we're not six, eight months behind when it is time to like-
It's just the first I've heard of it.
It's also pretty swampy back in there, so they've gotta work with that, too.
Yeah, the connection is-
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you for being proactive.
Well, that's what we do.
Okay, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Legal.
First, we have, uh, Resolution Number twenty twenty-two, three oh five dash R. This is for authorization of purchase of the Hexagon property. This is, uh, what we've negotiated is a four million dollar purchase price that would be, uh, paid out of ARPA funds. Uh, we just finalized the actual agreement for this Friday afternoon, so we actually have this ready to go forward. And our hope is to actually close, well, not hope, we're going to close before the end of the year. We have a December thirtieth, uh, close date now, so we, we pushed and we're able to, you know, get it done and pull it together, so, um, that's where we're at with this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, ready for a vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes.
Next, we have Proposed Ordinance Number twenty twenty-two, three, two, zero. Uh, this is an amendment to the city code increasing general penalties for misdemeanors in mis- in, uh, municipal court. We had our first reading on December the twelfth, and this will be the second reading. Ready for a vote on this, uh, proposed ordinance? Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion second. Any questions? Discussion, ready for a vote.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes.
All right. Next, we have a proposed ordinance Number twenty twenty-two dash three, two, six. This is an amendment of the city code to allow for virtual participation by city council and the mayor, uh, in times of illness. Uh, this is, uh, the second reading, first reading being on December twelfth, two thousand twenty. Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any discussion? Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes. Next.
Next, uh, Legal was asked to, uh, prepare Proposed Ordinance Number twenty twenty-two dash three, two, seven. This is for authorization for the operation of medical cannabis dispensaries within the corporate limits of the city of Madison, Alabama pursuant to Alabama Code Section twenty dash two A dash five, one, C. This is the second reading.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Opening up floor for discussion.
Yes. So, um, I will say, in the interest of full disclosure, I asked, uh, our personal family physician, Dr. Pettis, to come and speak tonight. Um, I asked him specifically to come to speak because he is a oncologist physician, and I felt like he had the education and the background and the years of experience in providing this product to his patients in their time of need. I also invited Representative Ball to come because he spearheaded the legislation that went before the state of Alabama to join twenty-nine other states in approving medical marijuana for its residents. This, uh, medication, and it is a medication, will be heavily, heavily, um, regulated, protected, and secured. Um, as Dr. Pettis mentioned, there have been some concerns and questions, and we probably all received the same emails from the same folks. And I will say, mine in particular, speaking for me, were split pretty much fifty-fifty. Half were for it and half were against it. Um, the arguments against it of bringing the wrong kind of people into town um, just didn't really hold for me because this is going to be prescribed by area physicians. Either your oncologist, um, if you're going through cancer treatment, or your, um, regular family practice physician if you're going through, um, another medical condition. Um, and speaking of family practice physician, I did reach out to my personal doctor, Dr. Kealan, and he, he wasn't able to come tonight, but he did say that I could share his information. And as Mr. Peters mentioned, um, he does prescribe Meradol for his patients that are going through chemotherapy. And he said it is effective, but it's very, very, very expensive, and it's very difficult for patients to get it. Uh, it's just not approved, um, because it doesn't fall within the medical marijuana, um, category. Um, I've forgotten what that word is for pharmacology, where they, they have that classification of drugs. So, um, the advantage, you know, somebody mentioned, yes, we will get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue. Is it worth it? You know, that, that's a difficult call. Um, it pays for half a roundabout. Um, it pays for paving in streets. It pays for city services. Um, would the detriment be greater than the positive? Would police presence be required at that dispensary? I don't really see it. I mean, it's, it's not gonna be open at night. It's gonna be probably like a doctor's office, eight to five. Uh, you're not able to walk into the facility. The door is locked. You'll have to show a prescription and a driver's license to even start the process of getting that prescription filled. Um, even then, when you're allowed into the building to pick it up, you're not able to go to the very back. So, um, I, I just wanted to share, and, and I wanna thank both those gentlemen for coming to share with their knowledge, their professional knowledge, of how this would benefit our community. And as Mr. Freel mentioned, if there's one person that we can ease their pain and suffering, why would we not wanna do that? And so, um, I didn't wanna, you know, preach a- And so, um, I didn't wanna, you know, preach a, um, a sermon here, but I did wanna share my thoughts. And I did wanna say with full disclosure that I did invite those that have specific professional knowledge to come and help educate us on this topic. And I wanna thank you for the time that you just gave me to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, um, for me, on this subject, we've, we've talked to our chief of police and he's reached out to other cities and with not a very, uh, po- positive response back. And so, I'm glad that, uh, if people need, need this medication, they would be able to go to Huntsville, Decatur, Athens, and several other towns around and be able to get it. We're not saying you can't use it in Madison. We're just saying we'd rather not have that, uh, building here. Uh, I'm glad, I'm very glad to have a, uh, antivenom if you get snake, snake bit. I wouldn't want a rattlesnake breeding house next door to my house, and that's the way I feel about this. So, for me, I don't think the risk is worth the reward. Um, if, if you want it, you can drive to Huntsville or a loved one can drive to Huntsville, Decatur, Athens and pick that up. But for me, I, I'm not for having that here in our community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Chief Candy, could you please come up and share with the community what you shared with us?
I spoke to, uh, Chief of Police in, uh, cities very close to size and location within our particular, uh, areas in Arkansas and Louisiana. Uh, the first one I spoke to was Bentonville, Arkansas's police chief, who, uh, said that it, they didn't notice an, any noticeable increase in crime. What they did have that was negative was a noticeable increase in traffic and a lot of people just hanging around in the shopping center where this, this place was. Um, and, uh, consistent with what I read from, uh, reports from Chief of Police in Florida, the traffic issue and the people just loitering in the parking lot caused other businesses nearby to, to close, uh, where these clinics were. So, um, I spoke to a chief in Louisiana. They did not have them yet, but a city nearby, uh, his city, the same thing they noticed was the increased traffic, the loitering, the foot traffic and things like that. And it was more of a quality of life more so than a, a increase in crime.
Okay, and would you be able to provide the patrol if it was needed? Do you have the staff?
W- w- we'd, well, we just don't know what to expect, I guess, so it's, it's hard for me to say. Um, our staff is pretty busy as it is right now with all the other things we normally handle, traffic situations, uh, thefts, shopliftings, domestics, all of those things. Uh, I did talk to the chief of Athens. Uh, the chief of Athens said they didn't conduct any type of study as to what type of issues they would have, but the, uh, one issue they will have is the fact that this type of business is a cash-only business because of the, the federal laws, uh, concerning, um, marijuana. As the feds has not recognized that, they still have those Schedule One drugs, so they wanna allow electronic banking transit, uh, transactions. So, his department is prepared to conduct armed escorts for, uh, people at that clinic to the bank. I really don't have the staff to do something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Chief Candy, before you leave, um, because of the way that our city limits are, do you feel like that there will still be impacts even if we vote no, regardless of how we vote tonight? Do you feel like there will be dispensaries in close proximity to our city? Or even kind of intermingled where some of the, um, boundaries are blurred?
I, I don't know how close they would build them to, to Madison. I, I don't know where they're actually looking at putting these places in Huntsville or Athens, so I can't really answer that question. I just don't know.
Thank you.
I can add that in Huntsville, they just had a decision on where they were gonna zone theirs and theirs is limited to their medical district. So, it's not going to be next to, uh, Son Seventy Two or something like that. They're limiting their dispensaries to that one specific area.
We would be able to do that as well. If it were to pass, we could qualify or quantify that it would have to be near the hospital?
Uh, it sounded like what Mary Beth was sharing with us is there were two main corridors that, uh, people were interested in. I believe that was what came out in the work session, and that was Seventy Two and Madison Boulevard.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
So, I don't think we have that type of zoning.
Mm-hmm.
I think one, one, one of the other concerns is if we had voted in and then we said, "Uh, we've made a mistake." From what I understand, we, we can't pull their license. Is that not a state, uh, ma- mandate on that?
I actually asked, follow up on that with our attorney because there's two prongs to that. Their dispensary license is one thing, but our business license would go behind it. You wanna go ahead and address that, Mr. Kilgore?
Absolutely. Uh, as we discussed, I believe during the work session, uh, as far as pulling the actual license for the dispensary, that would remain entirely within the preview of state and their commission and them, um, making that determination. However, we, and I confirmed this with council for the Cannabis Commission, and they, they confirmed that we can still issue our business license. And if there was any problem with that business, uh, illegal activity, people in the parking lot, et cetera, that we still have the authority to pull a business license. So, if you don't have a business license in Madison, even though we may issue it, we can pull it, then they can operate here. So, uh, I did confirm that with commission and they, they were, they shared my opinion that, uh, we still retain that right to do that, but we just simply can't do inspections, go inside. All that can still remain with the state. We just have that power of the business license.
I think an example of that would be Sequel. You know, we pulled their license in seven days, so I think it can be done.
Well, I also remember what we went through. That didn't take just seven days. It took, it took months.
Oh, yeah.
It, it did not take seven days, so.
Right, yeah, I voted to...
...that characterization.
Close it the first time around, but we lost that vote. Me and Greg and John lost that one.
The only thing I'll say there is part of what you were able to do, though, is we shored up our nuisance, uh, ordinance. So, that was part of, we have more teeth now where we didn't have as much teeth before.
Right.
So, I will say that.
Right.
So, can you, can you answer a couple of questions for me? Um, the, the regulation, what, what is it that the city can regulate? We can regulate the business license? Um, we can ra- we get some income, but it is cash, so they have to be, I guess, you know, this, this is an honor code? Um, 'cause, uh, you know, they...
As far as the business license, they, they would have to report whatever, uh, prospectively as far as the business for that first business license. So, it, when you say honor code, yes, I mean, it would be a bit speculative as far as what it would be. And just like any new business, they would have to provide some figure for us in order to calculate our, our business license. But, uh, to answer your question, basically the state's, uh, the Code Section basis is that they quote, "The state hereby preemptively regulates cannabis, medical cannabis," and they describe that as being from seed all the way through dispensary. So, that's where I wanted to have the clarification. That's why I went to talk specifically with the council for the commission and say, "I see that we should have, you know, some powers here and there," and they did confirm the business license. But outside of business license, we can tax it as a business license tax, we can tax it as a sales tax. We don't have, uh, any powers to inspect or, or, or look in, you know, basically go in and really do anything else other than that. So, uh, we're pretty limited to those avenues as far as any sort of regulation.
Okay, um, I guess, you know, a couple, couple of things for me. Um, first of all, you know, the argument of, of if it is good for or bad for, you know, there, there's research for both, as always. Um, so, again, I, I can't make that determination. I can't say that there are people that I know that, you know, it, it, it's worked for them. Um, on the other side of that, those same people don't mind driving another six miles to get whatever it is. Um, and, you know, we're talking about this dispensary. We're talking about possibly two dispensaries. I think the thing that I'm more alarmed about is, you said the, the state regulates it from seed to the, to the dispensary. We've got a grower coming to Madison. Is that, isn't that true? I mean, didn't someone purchase some property as a grower?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I think, yeah. Mary Beth talked about the possibility of that, yes.
So, we, we have a grower that's gonna come to Madison. We have a, a business that will potentially come to Madison that we have no regulation on. We cannot walk in there and say, "Hey, you know, what's going on?" In this dispensary, it's gonna be the same thing. Um, I, I, I'm going on, so I don't, I don't have any other questions if you don't wanna stand there.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm understanding.
So, um, but, um, I think the other, the other thing is, is like I said, you know, it, we've heard it's a slippery slope. You know, do you, do you start here and, and get into the other things? Possibly, possibly not. Um, again, driving six miles, I, you know, Madison is six miles square across. I just, I don't think that's a, a huge deal. Um, the thing that, that I'm kinda concerned about is we don't have to be first in here. This isn't our first shot, you know, it's, it's... Let's, let's see what happens. I mean, I, you know, again, if you're, if you're for or against it, I mean, we don't know. It's a, it's an unknown. Um, the thing that concerns me, not the most, but, uh, tremendously, is it's a cash business. I can tell you, I've, I've been in accounting and businesses most of my life and, um, you know, businesses love cash because you can't regulate it. You can't see it. So, if I wanna report that I'm making ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, that's my choice because we as a city cannot go in and verify it. And so, I would have to ask, you know, everybody if, you know, if this were a, a, there, there are pain clinics out there, you know, which, uh, which are for opioids and they have methadone clinics. Um, it's, it's kinda the same concept. You go in, you get your methadone, and basically you're transferring from one drug to another. You're not, you're not fixing the issue. You're just transferring to another, another issue. Um, if it is strong enough, then, then, you know, the doctor would prescribe it. If it's somewhere between a Tylenol and a, and a opioid, then, you know, maybe, maybe it is something. But we don't know that. I mean, there's research, like I said, for both ways. Uh, I, I know, uh, you know, Representative Ball's written a book. I mean, great, great, uh, great information, right? But again, the thing I'm concerned about is we ha- we have no regulation to the city. I mean, I'm kinda disappointed that, that, you know, it's been, it's a kind of pushed down to us with, with, as a mandate, with no income, with no, you know, no, no money. And we're gonna have a grower potentially and we can't do anything about that. So, you know, we argue, I, I remember, you know, it's only been maybe two years ago now that we were arguing about, you know, "I don't want the state, I don't want the feds, I don't want anybody telling me if I've gotta wear a mask or if I can't wear a mask or I can't..." And here we are, and it's being pushed down to us, and we're okay with that. So, for me, that's, that's kinda my issues. Two hundred and fifty K and, and, and revenue is just not enough for me, so that's all I've got.
If the state is just issuing thirty seven licenses and we pass this time and we say no this time, but we wanna maybe leave the door open as we see how it goes and if the businesses are protected and if they're providing their own security and all thirty seven licenses have been distributed, distributed, are we able to get a license down the road?
Uh, I think I might have misspoken at one point during our, our work session. There's thirty seven locations for the dispensaries.
Oh.
It's basically, there's individual licenses and they can, uh, only have one location in a county. And when you add it all up, there's thirty seven total dispensaries statewide, but even less licenses.
So, there can only be one dispensary in Madison County and if Athens, or Huntsville's already approved it, why are we even discussing it?
Well, they've approved it, but I don't know, um, as, I, I can't tell you what process any of those other cities are. And as far as, you know, uh, that, but what I can say is this, the process is that the state is requiring, if you want a license, you have to show up, you have to put in your, your, um, application by December thirty first with a business license, and you have to designate the location of where you want your dispensary. So, as a prac- practically speaking, uh, obviously those, those dispensaries are gonna look for, for, you know, locations that they can verify relatively sooner. So, if we were to, uh, say, "Well, we're not gonna pass it just yet," uh, we'd be highly unlikely probably to, to get one of those dispensaries to want to locate here if we were to say, "Table this, look at it again in a couple of months." And just to remind you, as far as the timeline with the state, they are going to basically go through, let me look at my... Uh, A- through April thirteenth, they're gonna have a deadline to correct applications. Then they're gonna have a thirty day public comments period after April thirteenth through mid-May. And, uh, then they will start to issue the licenses in, uh, July of next year. So, basically, it's gonna be another six months before they finalize that and actually give out the licenses. But as practically speaking, if we were to table this, to your question, uh, those, those dispensary would likely go elsewhere until...
Right.
But of course, there's, they are, they believe there's gonna be other license that they're gonna be issued later. We just don't know at this time when that's gonna be in the future.
I'm just wondering if we're wasting our time because they have twelve, if we were to pass it today, they'd have, and we're not, we'd only have twelve days or they'd only have twelve days to even reach out to the mayor's office and planning department, right?
I, I will say this. I, I think that there is a mechanism whereby you can apply before December thirty first and then they can, before Ap- April thirteenth, I think they may be able to...
Like a...
Provide a business license after the fact. And they may be able to come back, say February, and say, "Now I know where we're gonna be." But I still, just practically speaking, if there's people that are applying, say, "I know where I'm gonna be now today,"
Mm.
they may be more likely to get it, and that's just my take on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Kilgore, may I ask you a question for clarification, please? Um, the state is going to regulate this from seed to dispensary.
Correct.
And so, therefore, the state, in theory, would know how much marijuana was at each dispensary, correct?
It is, it is gonna be heavily regulated, as I understand. Uh, there's a whole section of the rules that, uh, very, very stringent as far as the type of security measures that they're gonna have inside require. I think they're actually requiring a video that is so, uh, has enough, um, resolution that you can actually identify people's faces. They actually had some language there for facial recognition and they backed off and says, "Well, maybe not face recognition, but we won't be able to recognize their face." Uh, they have to have designated parking, uh, but as far as the actual money, uh, there, there's all kind of accounting provisions in there where the state's gonna be all over it as far as regulating it.
So, my question is, okay, if they're regulating it from seed to the dispensary and they know how much the grower grew and they know how much was delivered at the dispensary, then would we not know how much was sold at the dispensary?
I, I, I guess it's a bit maybe more of an accounting question, uh, but from what I've seen, I, I think that the, the state's gonna have a pretty good handle on the sales, uh, but unfortunately, I'm just not well enough informed about all of that in order to give you a, a good opinion on it. But I will tell you this, uh, it's a ver- it's a hundred sixteen, there's, there's a lot of regulation and I can give you a more specific answer to that if you needed it, but, uh, at this time, I, I just can't answer the question.
All right, thank you.
Uh, sir, I had written you earlier today about the, uh, resolution banning marijuana manufacturing in Madison. Did you get more information on that?
I, I have had my opinion, but I wanted to get the opinion from, uh, from the council for the commission, and he did not respond to me today on that very question. I think that we are going to find that we don't have a lot of the regulation powers over the cultivation side of it. But having said that, um, if you were to take no action today, you can actually put together an ordinance to, to ban dispensaries. You, you could, you know, you could take that action as far as to ban. So, if you take no action today, then nobody can set up their dispensaries here. Uh, you can actually, but nothing in the act ban, prohibits you from being able to go in and ban them. Uh, I wanted to get some clarification from the commission because I don't think that it specifically gave me the answer that I wanted as far as whether we could take, go further and take the action that you proposed or, or at least wanted to know if we could take and to ban a cultivation here if we take no action. And I wanted to clarify, and I don't think I've got a good enough answer to be able to answer that to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. While you're getting answers to that question, I've heard of other cities actually imposing further regulations on cultivators so that, for example, uh, not allowing, even though Mary Beth said that they would be able to set up in an industrial area that's owned industrial for Madison, you could add additional restrictions such as, um, distance restrictions for residences. And so, I'd be interested in knowing if you can't ban a cultivator, what restrictions can be placed on them?
And it, it is very interesting because, uh, there's, the cultivation is actually, uh, deferred to the agricultural department uh, in their regulation, which puts you in another, another whole area of, of, of regulations. And I have not been able to fully digest all of what the agriculture, how they're regulating the cultivation side of it. But, uh, that is my understanding as well.
I'm very interested in that information.
Any other questions or discussion from anyone?
Yeah, I would just like to say that, um, I do appreciate all the public that has written. It has been a very hot topic in my email. Um, when this was first discussed, I was a no. I continue to be a no for the same reasons. Um, I just think that... Um, I just think that it's just not something we need in Madison, but if someone needs it, they have access to it in Huntsville, they have access in Athens, so I don't feel that we're restricting anybody from getting help that they do need. I just do not want to bring any unforeseen or foreseen problems. Um, many of the things that were sent to me showed what had happened in other communities, and it did escalate over time, and I just do not wanna see that happening in our community, so I am a no on it.
I just wanted to add, um, I was able to do some research as of this week, uh, thirty seven cities have approved medical dispensaries, six counties have done so, and as far as local cities, municipalities, Athens has approved it, well, this is all the list of people who approved it, Athens, Huntsville, Decatur, Priceville, Owens Crossroads, and Scottsboro, so those are some of those local municipalities, uh, that have approved it.
So it's available in the area?
Uh, it, at least these people have approved it, I don't, I can't speak as to who's actually planning to locate in these municipalities.
But, in Kansas, they are. Okay, thank you very much.
Right, thank you. And I will just add that, um, from my perspective, there's too much unknown to rush into a decision like this. Um, there are enough areas of access that our residents could seek the help that they need. I weigh our police chief's opinions quite heavily, and when he is recommending to us to exercise caution, to see how this plays out in surrounding areas, um, I, I consider that, uh, very heavily. And so, are we ready for a vote, everyone?
Mm?
Okay, Lisa?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Nay.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Nay.
Councilmember Denzine?
Nay.
Councilmember Seaford? And the motion fails. Mr. Kilgore, next, we have an ordinance?
We have, uh, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash three three four. This is for the authorization to issue warrants, bonds for construction on the I five sixty-five westbound ramps, and pay off of the Town Madison bonds. This is the second reading, with the first reading having occurred on December twelfth of twenty twenty. Uh, we have here today our bond counsel, Preston Bolt, and our, uh, financial advisor, uh, Rush Rice.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and ask Mr. Bolt and Mr. Rice to come to the podium. Uh, Mr. Rice, do you wanna start, and, uh, just give us a little brief of what you've been up to, uh, this last week?
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm, I'm Rushton Rice, I, I know everybody here, I'm very grateful to have been engaged by the city almost two years ago to start, uh, looking at, into this project on behalf of the city, to gauge, uh, the pros, the cons, the risks, the potential rewards. Uh, it's been the most, by far the most interesting, uh, project I've worked on in many, many years. Uh, I think in the final analysis, uh, we will find that this, this project, this financing that'll be done, will prove to be one of the, 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 the most important revenue generation, uh, uh, actions that the city has taken in a long, long time. Uh, the, the bonds were sold last week on the fifteenth. Uh, we were very fortunate, uh, called, you know, back this past March, rates started to go up, uh, but for the last six weeks or so, rates have been trending downward. I'd like to point out that the, our underwriter, the Frasier Lanier Company, Johnny Dills Company, did a magnificent job of getting this financing done. This will pay off the district bonds, uh, in their entirety, uh, this will pay for the flyovers in the ingress and egress, and the construction management, and provide for contingencies on the highway project. Um, we were hoping to get this done somewhere in the four and a half percent range, uh, happy to report that Frasier Lanier got the bonds done at an interest rate of three point eight zero percent. Uh, this is for twenty-five years. If you throw all the fees, we always look at the true cost of borrowing, throw all the fees, expenses, uh, of the professionals that worked on the transaction, an all-in cost of four point one percent. Um, our calculations, which we've, which are now final, we estimate, uh, and this assumes a one and a half percent annual growth rate in sale, in tax revenues in Madison, and as we know, as we've covered here many, many times before, nothing in Madison grows at one and a half percent a year. We, we have, but, but if you assume one and a half percent annual growth, uh, after debt service on these bonds, for the life of these bonds, a minimum of two hundred and eighty-four million dollars will flow to the city of Madison and Madison schools. Uh, that's a, that, that's after the debt service on these bonds. Um, we, you have before you an ordinance that will, that will allow for, for the, these warrant, in Alabama, we call them warrants, uh, their bonds for these warrants to be issued. Um, my next day of law school will be my first, so I'm gonna turn it over to Preston Bolt, with the Hand Arndall Firm from Mobile, who is bond counsel, and he will tell you, uh, precisely what it is you'll be voting on. Uh, once again, I'd like to thank you for giving our firm the opportunity to work for the city of Madison. We are one hundred percent satisfied that this has a very high margin of safety, and this is a great deal for Madison. Uh, so, so thanks. And I, and I'll answer any questions anybody has, but, but Preston will get to the, the meat of this.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you.
Mr. Bolt, will you explain the ordinance that we're considering tonight?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And thank you also, from my standpoint, for the ability to work with the city, it's been a great pleasure. Uh, we've, I've been working, uh, in one capacity or another with, uh, on, on this project for a good while, and it's nice to see this come to fruition. Uh, the ordinance before you tonight, uh, is a pretty typical, uh, warrant authorization ordinance. Uh, it authorizes the issuance of the warrants, it sets the maturity amounts for each year between now and twenty forty-eight, it sets the, uh, interest rates, it provides for redemption early, under certain circumstances, of those, of those warrants, and, uh, sort of generally sets out the terms. It authorizes the appointment of, uh, of the Frasier Lanier Company and the sale of the warrants to the Frasier Lanier Company at the approved price, uh, and, and ratifies the action taken in signing a warrant purchase agreement, so that once you adopt this ordinance, everything will be done. So that on December the twenty-eighth, we will have a closing. In the meantime, I have a big stack of papers for Ms. Thomas and the mayor to sign, uh, tonight, and so we'll have everything ready to go, and everything we, we expect will go very smoothly, and we'll be ready to close on the twenty-eighth with no great fanfare. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, before we do that, could we have a motion and a second before we open up the floor?
Motion approved.
Okay.
Okay, motion and a second, and now, let me open the floor up for any questions anyone might have.
I have one, so just to make sure, in, in this, we have the ability, with each year, there's, that we have the bond payment, and then there's the excess of that, we have the ability to bank that if we want to, and we can pay these off, once, once we have enough money, we could pay that off early? Is there a timeframe on when you could do that?
So, under Alabama law, you have to have the right to redeem early after ten years. That's the typical provision, and so that's what's in here, uh, that's what's been sold to the investors. They know they've got this investment until, uh, twenty thirty-three.
Okay.
Twenty, yeah, twenty thirty-two, December one, twenty thirty-two. At that point, if you have enough bank, you could pay it all off, you could also pay off part of it, that's your choice.
Okay. And obviously, the school money that comes out of this is autonomous from a lot of what you did in a separate fund, is that you can get all of their money?
That's all, that's all their own, that's right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'd like to thank y'all both, I think I've talked to y'all both more than I have my wife the past three or four months. Late nights, early mornings, weekends, and I thank y'all for y'all's patience and y'all's knowledge that has kinda guided us through, through this, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
I did have one question, really more, um, edification, I mean, it's just, so, we've, we've talked about this, Rush, and I think you can speak to it about, you know, what our conservative estimate was, of how early it could pay off potentially, um, I don't know if you-
If, if you, if you use the, that one and a half percent growth rate, um, this could be, and, and if, and if the city were to determine that the city's gonna, gonna bank a hundred percent of the, of the excess, in other words, there aren't, you know, there, there aren't other projects that, that the city might, might come up with, or future councils, I think I would, you know, you never know what, but, you know, at a one and a half percent growth rate, you would accumulate enough funds to pay this off in twelve or thirteen years. If you, if you assume a five percent annual growth rate, make that seven or eight years, uh, Madison does a lot, grows a lot faster than that. Uh, so the, the, and, and this is fixed rate financing, of course, so there is, you know, the, the amount of the debt service is what it is, it can't go up. So, the, if the, if the tax revenues go up, you can rat hole that much more money for future debt service, or, or use the funds for any lawful purpose as it accumulates.
And that's with what's guaranteed right now, and again, Town Madison still has room to grow as far as a lot of the sales tax, property tax.
Right, we, we, and once again, as we've covered here, we're, we're not, we haven't included in our, in our, any of our analysis, anything that's not at least assigned lease and, and, in, in, in process. Most, most of these things are, are, a lot are open, a lot are under construction, uh, we haven't included anything that, that the developers are chasing.
And as you know, I mean, we've, we've been, Madison's been pretty ultra-conservative throughout the years with, with different councils. Um, Mr. Bolt, I know you've, you've seen a lot of, you know, and we had, we've, are we going against anything that we've done before? Would you still think we're being conservative?
This is, every, everything is just as conservative as it, as it can be, and that you could, you, you could not, um, you, you couldn't find, I, I, we, we were, we were paid, and have been paid, to find the flaw, find, you know, we get paid to find, to, a lot of times, we get paid to tell people not to do things. Uh, we're, we're gonna get paid regardless. Uh, in this case, uh, we can't find any, any red lights or, or even yellow lights, we can't find anything but green lights in, in this project right now. And I would say also that, that, uh, particular Renee, Greg, and Mayor, it's been a joy to work with, with all of you, and, and this, this, uh, this council is extremely well-informed. Uh, we, we've had occasion to, uh, had, have great questions asked, and so I think that this is, by any measure, has, has a, has a, basically what I would term as an overwhelming margin of safety.
I, I just, just for me, I wanna thank both of you guys for working on it. I, I, I know both of you got paid, and, and Greg and, and, uh, Renee, I know you got paid probably, I don't know, ten cents an hour or something like that, the time you put in.
I think not, no.
Um, I, I know, um, you know, out of, out of everybody up here, you guys really earned your checks, and, and Mayor, I thank you for, for all the time that, that your office has put in this, and not, not just here recently, I mean, it's been going on for years. I'm excited about it, um, you know, it's, it's, we, we got a chance to really do something for Madison, so I, I, I appreciate everybody that was involved in it.
Okay, thank you all.
Roger, back there in the back, he's, he, you know, like his name called out, but Roger was, he was instrumental in this also.
He keeps the piggy bank.
Before you walk off, there's a lot of people that are just now joining into this conversation, and can you just go in a little more, more detail on what the funds are that are coming out of Town Madison, and how it's all, all this tax money, and just give a brief overview of everything that you have put together? Because there really are people that are just now engaged.
It, the, this is your, um, this, this is what we call tax increment financing, that was, this started out, these were gonna be district bonds, when Town Madison was something that was on a drawing board, something that was nothing more than a, than a projection. Uh, there are people that will come and do very detailed analyses, big firms with lots of malpractice insurance, that will say, yes, this'll work, we think this'll work, we, in our opinion, this will work, and you can go and do non-rated, very high-interest bonds, based on future sales taxes that are gonna come in. Well, what's happened here is, as this has gone along, and businesses have opened, and homes have been built, and apartments have been built, and now we have sales taxes rolling in, uh, we're projecting the, um, the tax impact from Town Madison, uh, in fiscal twenty twenty-three will be six, oh, about six million dollars, just in this current year. These are new revenues, uh, we're talking about, uh, sales taxes, we're talking about ad valorem taxes, so all of these are, 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 are new revenues coming into the game, which all they, all of that does is makes it safer and safer for the city to say, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll jump up in here and we'll borrow this money, because the city of Madison can borrow money at these really low interest rates. And so it wa- and so, the other thing that, that makes this work better, is if we did district bonds, then one hundred percent of all that sales tax revenue and ad valorem tax revenue, and the, the liquor tax revenue, has to go into what we call a super sinker, and sit there to pay off the district bonds, so the city wouldn't get any benefit from this until these bonds are paid off. Now the city is already getting benefit and will continue, and as more businesses open, and as there's more growth out there, the city will get more and more and more. So it's, uh, and again, comes back to that, what I call that overwhelming margin of safety.
Right. I just want people to understand that, in the previous agreement in twenty eighteen, all the money was going back to repay-
Correct.
The corporate, and now this funding agreement is changing that, and so now the money is going to us to pay it back, and any proceeds that exceed the debt service, we get immediately.
Exactly.
So instead of everything going for the next however many years elsewhere, it's coming to us, and that's why that is a benefit to the city.
That's correct.
Is that-
Could you step to the microphone, Mr. Bolt? Thank you.
The funding agreement that was done just recently to redo the two thousand eighteen version will go away on the twenty-eighth. When we pay off the district bonds, your obligations under that funding agreement completely go away, and you won't have any contractual obligations at all to the district.
Okay, and all liabilities that are associated are not-
That's a, that's a big change, and there's, and so, and so you then, all the liabilities, whatever the district still owns at that point, it's supposed to be transferring out to either the city, or the state, or whoever the appropriate, or public utility, whoever it is who should be owning those public, that public infrastructure. But at, but at this point, the city would have no further obligation to fund anything for the district.
Okay, and any liabilities that was lawsuits, anything that's not coming?
You're not acquiring the district, you're simply paying off the district's debt.
Okay. Okay.
And so it's, it remains an entity at the moment, uh, and it, and you have no obligations with respect to its other obligations, whatever they may be.
Okay.
Well, just to follow up on the cooperative district status, uh, it remains an entity now, but we have discussed that at some point in the future, when we get all of our paperwork, um, cleared, and we, we anticipate that the cooperative district will then go away, it does not need to exist anymore.
That's correct, and, and, and typically in this arrangement, that's what happens, as soon as it's done its job, as soon as it's paid off the debt that it had to accomplish these projects, as soon as it's transferred all of its assets, then it would cease to exist, any assets it continues to own would be divided between the city and the county as the two entities that formed it, uh, and y'all would have to work out an arrangement with the county about that.
And then could you also speak to the agreement you've been working on between the city and the county?
Yes, so the, as you know, the county agreed to pay approximately five percent, and that's been tru- true throughout all these funding arrangements. Uh, we, looking at the existing funding agreement, felt like it really would be much better if, instead of simply being assigned to the city once this debt was paid, we have a new funding agreement, so the county will consider, and, and you, you, as part of the ordinance, you're authorizing the negotiation and execution of a funding agreement, to pay directly to the city, the five percent that the, that the county would otherwise be paying, five percent of the overall debt service, uh, to own the portion of the debt that relates to the Town Madison obligation payoff. So that, that's an important distinction, they're paying five percent of the indebtedness, so approximately five percent of one half of the total- So approximately five percent of one half of the total debt will be covered by the county.
Okay.
And they will pay that directly to the city.
Okay.
And the district will no longer be involved in that either.
And they're scheduled to take that up this week at their, their-
Right, and that, that also would go into effect on the twenty-eighth.
Any other questions?
I just got one interesting thing to add. Um, you know, we've, we've talked about a lot of things here. When, when the last council first came in office, the interest rate was ten percent. That was renegotiated in a, in a different, um, agreement. And that went down to five and a half percent, I think roughly.
Five point four seven.
Five point four seven.
Almost exactly, yeah.
And now, we're, we're taking control of this at four point one. So had we continued to let this go, we, every year that it went, we're roughly losing one point five percent.
Mm-hmm.
So just a different way to look at it, but, you know, I think, again, I think it's a, a good, good deal. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
I have one last thank you.
Absolutely.
Brian came in here late to the game, and thank you for all your hard work. But we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about Megan Zingarelli, who put in enormous amounts of time throughout the course of all this to continue down the process of that. Our legal team has done a great job on this internally with the utilization of those guys, so.
And I will say to move as quickly as we had to to get this to the bond market, I wanna thank Mr. Dell with Fraser Lanier. Uh, he knows Madison. And so we felt very confident in, in staying with him for this particular deal. Uh, we could not have done it without Mr. Bolt and Mr. Rice. Your expertise, um, was invaluable to the city of Madison. And of course, Roger Bellamy, he's providing numbers and crunching numbers, uh, right alongside you. And so he has helped us, and we thank you, Roger, and of course, Mr. Kilgore. All right, is everyone ready for a vote?
I do have one other comment. And it has to do with a lot of comments I've received over the weekend concerning the flyovers and the necessity of the flyovers and why it's upon us at this point. Um, and I've given this a lot of consideration. Um, I asked Mr. Cece at one point why the developer did not go forward and do it. Um, I don't want to, I hope I don't mischaracterize, but it was because you'd already spent so much money and you were hitting the cap. And I just would like to understand why at that point, other investment money wasn't added, so it could have been done at that point. See, were there no other investors that could, could make up that difference at that time? It was a, why, why did the funding fall short there? Could you, just, 'cause it really isn't a-
I, I'm sorry, but that's out of order. We're here to do a vote, we're not questioning people. Uh, you can have any comments you like, but we're not questioning people.
Okay, well, it goes back, okay, that's fine. Um, it is a concern with the people, and I just try to be responsive to the people. And that's why, again, went to it, that's fine, I will.
Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmem- member Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Did you get Seifert, too? You already ca, you called out Seifert as well?
I called out Denzine, I didn't hear her vote.
I said aye.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes, thank you.
Uh, next, we have a resolution number twenty twenty-two dash three nine, I'm sorry, three two nine. This is, uh, for authorization of a contract with ACOM for construction management services for the interstate, uh, I five sixty-five exchange phase two westbound ramps. This is gonna be for a, a contract in the amount of two million, four hundred forty thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars. And these proceeds are to be paid from the bond issued. And these have actually already been rolled into in a part of, uh, what we've already reviewed as far as the, uh, the, uh, the warrants, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, are there any questions? Seeing none, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes.
And finally, I'll be brief. Uh, I just wanted to report on some opioid litigations that are coming very close to, uh, they've been settled. And we're getting to a point now where, uh, the city of Madison may see some of the benefits from some of this litigation. We have three, uh, large, uh, cases that were handled, uh, one by the AG's office with Walmart, uh, one what we call the, uh, McKeeson litigation, and one that's called the Jansen litigation. I just wanna let y'all know that these monies will start coming in, and some of them have earmarking requirements with them. Uh, it, one being the McKeeson litigation. This is basically gonna be a structured settlement where two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars will come in over ten years. And we have very specific requirements for that, um, as far as training for opioid overdoses, pre-trial diversion, syringe services, long, long, long list of things. And it, but I just wanna let you know that that has come to a resolution. And, uh, if there's another work session, I may, uh, we, we may benefit from discussing what to use those monies for. They're not gonna be large amounts of money, like I said, paid out over ten years, you know, two hundred ninety-five thousand. Uh, we have, the other litigation will get a hundred and forty-five thousand lump sum. And Walmart is, that litigation's probably just gonna, uh, bring us some, uh, improvements for our court system. Uh, but none of this is, is really gotten to the point where their special masters in the federal courts can tell us, this is exactly what we're gonna get and where we're gonna get it. So I just wanted to, uh, let you know that's on the horizon, and I'd be happy to let y'all know how that's, uh, evolving. But right now, we're expecting, you know, very small payments on a monthly basis from this, uh, McKeeson litigation. And I'll be happy to keep you updated as it develops.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Miss Lanes, announcements?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to confirm work session date is still January eleventh?
Yes, we're gonna get that notice sent out.
Thank you.
And if there's no further business?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.